Welcome to the April 18th, 2023 City Council Work Session. I'd like to turn it over to City Manager Benda to walk us through the agenda and review.
Thank you, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of City Council. We are in another budget reconciliation, paying attention through public hearing and also reflections from the DAS and what have you. In emails, I wanted to queue up at the start of the meeting a couple of different conversations, one of which is, we have Lynchburg City Schools, we have our superintendent, and I think I see Vice Chair and a number of her trusted honored staff with her, I can't remember everybody's names. But the question that council's posed is consideration of categorical funding. Greg is going to engage you on, kind of taking you through how it works, and remember there are two ways in which that you can appropriate resources to a school system in Virginia. One is a lump sum, the other, which is mostly what folks do. The other is category. And so we'll kind of walk you through what that looks like. Second, we had to thank the Commissioner for being patient. We had to push him last time, so he's here to talk about senior disabled veteran tax relief. Then I'm going to lean on Donna. We've gotten consideration, a letter that I received about an expectation. Four members wanted a certain particular rate and certain things to be kind of considered in that. Want to make sure over time, as we've had conversation, what's in, what's out, and then kind of talk you through how we fund that budget, whether or not we use one-time resources or we use proposed reductions to the workforce. We have submitted budget instructions as of last week to city departments, city staff to provide those reductions by tomorrow to us. We will assemble those and see whether or not we can have them ready for your consideration. It'll be a Herculean effort by week's end, so it looks like it'll be probably early next week, the 24th, that we'll push that out to you and your peers. And last of which, we had to push this conversation as well as about Horizon and whether or not to invest in that resource that CEO Melissa Lucy of Horizon Health talked to you about. I've got Police Chief kind of waiting in the wings, and doggone it, I miss responding to Melissa Lucy in time enough for her to be over here, but she does send her best and she's, you know, obviously very, very considerate of those, of that opportunity. So, Madam Mayor, with that, turn it back to you, unless you would like to just go ahead and have Deputy City Manager Greg Patrick engage you on the first topic.
Go ahead, Greg, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Council. Today, to kick us off, a brief presentation on considerations for categorical funding for Lynchburg City Schools. I know that there's support from at least four on council for this method of appropriating funds to Lynchburg City Schools. As the City Manager mentioned, I'd like to thank our family over at Lynchburg City Schools for being here to help move along this conversation. I do believe they have a retreat scheduled for 5:00, so we are going first with this to make sure that they can get there timely. First, K-12 funding in the Commonwealth. And this was the first slide we kicked off with when we went through considerations around a school funding formula, but it is the General Assembly's constitutional requirement to provide for a system of free and appropriate public education. State utilizes a fairly complicated mathematical formula called the standards of quality to determine minimum funding. Local governing bodies also allocate local resources, and the school board operates the school system. The state does set a floor for local funding, that's called the required local effort, and it is based around a composite index of a locality's ability to pay, which is based on some economic data within each locality. That being said, the Code of Virginia allows for local appropriation of funds for public education in two ways, and this is both the local funding and the state funding, as council appropriates, is a fiscal agent for, for both fundings. Can appropriate by lump sum, which is the most traditional, the most common method, or, and the "or" is doing a lot of work here, by categories. And what this means is council can choose one or the other method and can't really use a hybrid approach. So what that means is you can either appropriate by lump sum, or you can appropriate by each relevant category. You can't say appropriate one specific category and then lump sum the rest. I had a conversation with our city attorney around that this morning, and that was the guidance that we received. So first, with Lynchburg City Schools, let's take a look at historical funding by category. As you can see here, there are, if we go back to the last slide, there are nine categories that a school system is able to use. Lynchburg City Schools uses seven. And really, if we look at those categories, there's only a bulk of money or a significant material amount of money, really, in about five of those categories. There's a very small amount of funding in facilities and other non-instructural funding. I just want to point out that the data that we are using here is data that we received from Lynchburg City Schools in response to a number of council questions. I am doing my best to put the data in sort of a way that's going to allow council to have a conversation, understand the context around it. If I make any data-related errors, I'm sure our friends will correct me and provide appropriate context around that. But as you can see, the largest, by far, category of funding is instructional, followed by operations, maintenance, and then administration, health, and attendance. Next, if we look at funding by category, and this compares the FY 2023 adopted Lynchburg City Schools budget to the proposed fiscal year 2024 budget, you can see where that funding falls. The largest increase there is in instruction, almost a $10 million increase out of about $11.5 million of total increase. Keep in mind, this proposal includes about $7.1 million of new money from the city. This is, that's $4.1 million above the $3 million included in the City Manager's proposed budget, and about $5 million above the adjusted budget that we started working from at our last council meeting. And again, these, this data is from Lynchburg City Schools and the adopted, or the proposed fiscal year 2024 schools budget. Next, let's look at staffing. So this is Lynchburg City Schools staffing by category. Now, this doesn't take into consideration whether the position is SOQ-funded or not SOQ-funded. We don't have that data, and quite frankly, I'm not sure that it would be easy for schools to suss that out with any degree of specificity, but we can, we can look at total staffing by category. As you can see, there is, there's materials, there's staffing in FY 23 in five categories. The majority of that staffing is in instructional. Now, this look, this three-year look, is fiscal years '21 through '23. We do not have this data for the proposed fiscal year 2024 budget, so that is a limitation of the data here. I will tell you that if you look at the staffing in administrative, administration, attendance, and health, you'll see a fairly substantial jump in '23 over '22. My understanding, and correct me if I'm wrong, this is the year that we began to pay subsidies to the school board, so nine of those FTEs represent the small subsidy that the school board members are receiving. So from a, from a real staffing standpoint, that increase is substantially less than the, what, the 18 odd that it looks like, or 19 or 20 odd that it looks like there are in there from '22 to '23.
'22 to '23, you were talking about?
Yep. This slide's very small, and I apologize for that. This is a look at, so there had been lots of conversation in City Council around staffing and the funding for the administrative function of Lynchburg City Schools. So this is a look at the FY 2023 staffing in the administrative category. And I think one of the important takeaways here is that this is administration, attendance, and health. So a, there are quite a few positions in here that are not what you would consider traditional administrative functions. So this is in order from position titles that there are the most of, down to the ones that there are the least of. The table was too big to put in as one large table, so I broke it in two here. But you can see, there's 11 elementary LPNs. There are 10, and forgive me, my eyes aren't quite good enough to see my own slide from this distance, but 10 elementary attended security clerks. Again, the nine school board members that weren't in the 2022 budget in this way. School nurses, secretaries, supervisors of student services, behavior coaches, school psychologists, attendance clerks, board-certified behavioral analysts. It's not till we get down to financial analyst at three that you really see kind of traditional administrative functions in this, in this category. So I thought that was important to point out as council considers how to fund Lynchburg City Schools in this upcoming budget. Next steps moving forward, it's, if we are going to move to categorical, categorical funding, it's first identifying the total amount of local funding for Lynchburg City Schools in fiscal year 2024. Keep in mind that the City Manager's proposed, that the school's proposed budget included an increase of roughly $7.1 million in local funding. City Manager's proposed budget included about $3 million, a $3 million increase, and the adjusted budget that we are working for assumes a $2.1 million increase from $40.8 million to $42.9 million. From there, and this is the part that I think is new to all of us, it's, how do we set the funding levels for one or all categories? And what that means is, you know, ultimately, council, council will, if we categorically appropriate funds, appropriate funds directly to seven categories, most likely. In order to build a budget by categories, schools have to understand the limiting factors in each category, right? And overall, so that is, what's the total amount of funding? And that is, if there are categories where we are going to limit the funding or reduce the total funding that is in their proposed budget, what are those categories? From there, they can go back and build a budget that will provide an update on the impact of those funding changes. But again, I know this is an important conversation, one that council is eager to embark on. Wanted to provide some context here, some numbers, some staffing information, also have our school partners here to be able to answer any questions. And with that, I will turn it over to Madam Mayor for council's consideration.
Okay, thank you so much for that presentation. Do we have any questions? Answer all of them?
Not a question, but a lot of folks are thinking if they have any questions. You might going back to the previous five years of funding?
I do have one question just about this slide. I'm assuming that '19 through '22 are actual dollar spend, and FY 23 is the amended or proposed numbers?
These are all budgeted funds. So this is what was actually budgeted.
And we're still in '23, so...
It's the '23 adopted or most updated amended budget, yeah. And '19 through '22 are budgeted as well, and those would be the, in those fiscal years, the numbers that are representative of the last time their budgets were amended.
In your understanding, or if you don't know, that's fine, I'm sure there's, some folks behind you who might. I know there's significant issues in transportation, the drop-off from $7.8 to $8 million in fiscal year '19 to '23. That's quite significant. Just give some more insight as to why.
So part of what we did in transportation, if you recall, is we had budgeted, just in bus drivers alone, over 100 positions that we weren't filling. So as we continued to increase bus driver salary over the last couple of years, although less people, but higher salary, so we took some of those vacant positions, used that money to increase bus driver salary.
And thank you for being here today. Where else have you done the managed vacancy strategy?
In terms of just enrollment, like when we look at particularly at the elementary level, so rather than when we have a school that either needs another, let's just say a classroom teacher, we'll look and see if there's another school that we could borrow, steal, move a classroom teacher from there by collapsing class sizes. So we've done that before, just hiring, as well as transporting kids to different schools. So we do get class size reduction money, so whenever we hit like 19 in a classroom, we might close second grade at one school and offer families an opportunity to attend nearby school where second grade is smaller, so that's some of that. We've also repurposed positions, which, when you're looking at admin growth, some of that might be in repurposing positions, but if you actually count the number of bodies, those bodies are, in some cases, the same, but we've just changed their position as people have either retired, if there's a different need, we'll repurpose that position for something else with that. I do want to point out what might be obvious but not, that we are, those years represent the CARES years, the CARES funding. There's a lot of CARES funding that's tied up in instruction. I think one of the questions is, why didn't instruction just grow, grow, grow? We have a lot of funding that is supplementing instruction through CARES, so you won't see that in the operating budget, but you'll see that in the CARES budget, but you won't have that continuing going forward. So some of the CARES money has already expired, and we've used those funds, and we still have a little bit more as we're moving forward, but when you're looking at it, you have to also consider that.
What positions were those? Were those the positions that, that I don't mean to come across this way, but I don't know how else to phrase it? There were some positions that were going to be added and then no longer, they were going to be temporary?
Right, so when you look at behavioral support, so remember, and we're trying to be responsive to what we hear, many of the concerns we heard once we came back from the hybrid schedule into the full schedule, remember during the hybrid years, we had smaller class sizes, less behavioral problems. Come back to full year, put them all back together, behavioral problems. And the big concern was, what are you doing to help teachers? What are you doing to help them? So you'll see some behavioral coaches in there, you'll see some BCBA positions that are also in there. Some of that is also in the CARES funding, as well as one of the things that we did start during COVID was the virtual academy because of the, you know, the need for parents who did not want their kids in in-person learning. Since coming back full-time, we still have over 200 students who are in the virtual academy, and not for reasons of COVID, but for reasons of learning style. That staff is in there as well.
So of those, of that batch of staff, and again, I don't mean it to sound this way, forgive me, I'm just trying to find a way to articulate it, weren't there going to be a batch that we're not going to continue on, and are they now?
They're still there now because we still have the funding. The batch that we didn't think that would continue is the ones that were providing the behavioral support, the tutoring support, because we all thought, oh, it's just one year of COVID, it's only going to take one year to get out of it, and it's not. And you all are seeing, and it's not just Lynchburg City Schools, when we're looking at some of the significant issues that kids are having as a result of COVID and a number of things that are going forward.
So you're going to be holding on to those positions?
We started to step down from some of those positions as we, as we've moved forward. For example, we had positions that were the, we had a bunch of folks who were helping with COVID when we had to do the calls and do the screening and do all of that kind of stuff. We're stepping down on some of that, or we've stepped down.
Okay, so once the ARPA and federal dollars run out, are you going to be taking on the financial responsibility for this dollar state access to continuing?
I'm sorry, say that one more time.
Once those federal dollars have run out, are you going to be taking on the responsibility of paying for those positions moving forward?
I think that we've already started some options for paying for those positions. You guys know we were awarded an $8.4 million grant to, for behavioral support, which is in student services, which is also in administration, that's one of those categories. So as we're looking at, are kids still have needs after we run out of SFR funds, we are looking at ways to do that. So yes, we are always going to prioritize student needs first when we're developing a budget. I think one of the questions that our school board is going to discuss is the virtual academy, because that's a big part of what we started, but what we're realizing is that there's a population of our kids that are actually thriving in that learning environment, and that is funded by the SFR fund.
So generally, yes?
I want to say maybe yes, but I can't say that because each year is a new year for me to sit down and look at what the student needs are. So I don't want to say I'm going to keep position X if in a year or two, X is not needed. So I don't want to go on record as being said that this is what we're going to keep, but I will go on record saying, each year I'm going to evaluate what my students need, and I'm going to advocate for that, as well as staffing, salary increases. Can I ask a question since I'm at the table now?
Sure.
With regard to, maybe this is for you, Greg, or maybe not, with regard to categorical funding, so we do get SOQ funds for, and I'll just pick one position since he happens to be here, deputy superintendent. So we get state funds, SOQ funds for deputy superintendent.
How many?
At 1.6 or something like that, is the thing. There's a local match to that. So how does that work if we do categorical funding? Is there a local match that also has to go, because we can't accept SOQ funding by saying we're going to take funds for just teachers or funds for just, or just this? How would that work?
Trying to defer to Greg on the logistics. I guess I'll let him.
I think, and I don't know, because I've never done this before, never got this far down the, but I think that we would likely end up where, at a very minimum in each category, there would be sufficient funding to staff all of the SOQ-funded positions and their matches. I'm not sure that we could, that we could fund the category at a level that is less than that. That would be my assumption, but I think we have to, we have to kind of test where we land here to see, and if that, if we land at a place that provides insufficient funding to fund the SOQ-funded positions plus their matches, then we would probably have to figure out from a, from a legal standpoint, where we're standing.
How appropriate to get where we need to be.
And the reason why I ask that, because when you look at just instruction alone, if you just take K-5 and kindergarten assistance, so just teachers in K-5, and just kindergarten assistance, we have one assistant in each of our five kindergarten classes, we are averaging about, in K-5, somewhere between 32 to 36 teachers in that grade level across the division, right? SOQ funding is somewhere down around 22, 23, or 24. So it's, and for instructional assistance is worse. SOQ-funded for K instructional assistance, kindergarten instructional assistance, is 3.92 positions, and we currently have one in every classroom, so over 30 right now. So most of those people would not be SOQ-funded, as probably about 88 of those staff members would not receive SOQ funding if you just went with a straight SOQ categorical model, if that's what you did. So then if you allocate the money there and then do something different, how, one question I have, is how would I differentiate between who's who? Because the state does not give us a list to say of your 39 kindergarten teachers, here are the ones who are SOQ-funded, here are the ones who are not. And would that local match for any other, and I just used K-5 because that was easy to calculate, any other positions, would that obligation have to be met first before I can go back and now fund my additional fifth grade, fourth grade teachers?
If I may interject briefly, Greg, so we can take a step back to help understand where the money flows from and to, and then that might, I'm sorry to interrupt. So forgive me for being dense. Dollar comes from Richmond, does it pass through the city to venue, or does it go straight to you?
I'm assuming that money is, I want to defer.
We're the fiscal agent.
It all comes directly.
So then with that logic, if we were to pick a dollar amount and allocate administration, instruction, what have you, then I don't, I don't understand, I don't understand the element of, I'm not trying to sound disrespectful, how y'all, I don't understand the nature of your question, where if we're the fiscal agent, to use that term, we appropriate to you all, and then there's the bucket. So are we looking at it and saying, well, we have these eight dollars and this is local? No, the school budget is one line item from us, so therefore it's historically just been one check and then it moves over. Do you understand how I'm trying to?
Well, I understand that. That's the lump funding model. I'm not talking about if you lump fund, I'm talking about if you go with the categorical funding.
I guess what I'm saying is, if we're the fiscal agent and the dollars, once they hit us, are both green, if you will, why does it matter?
I think it matters if I'm planning the budget. So if you're saying the dollars are both green, if it doesn't matter, if you're going to allocate whatever you allocate to instruction, and it doesn't cover all of the teachers, right? Let's just say it doesn't, because we just saw that the SOQ is like 24, and the actual is about 34, right? Okay, so I'm short there, but I also have other SOQ-funded positions. So I guess my question is, if you decide, we don't want you to be short there, so we're going to add extra money there so you're not short, right? That could be something that you guys decide to do, but we're not going to add something here. But I guess what I'm saying is, if there's an SOQ responsibility here, but you, if your feeling is, I'd rather put it here, where does that put us legally if I'm, if we have to have that local match? Is the local match fungible, is what I'm asking? So if the local match is $24 million, let's just say, can you put the $24 million anywhere you want? Or does the $24 million have to follow each one of those categories first, and then you can add extra, second, which would dictate how much money I may have for staffing? Does that make it?
Councilman, questions?
First, I obviously have to declare that my wife is a teacher at Lynchburg City Schools, but this conversation is affecting the public at large and educating all our children, and I just have to disclose that because of the conflict that interests that, and say that I'm able to participate in these discussions fairly objectively in the public interest. I think the best way to kind of get the answer for what you're asking is what I'm trying to figure, I'm trying to figure out how to get you your answer to that question, is I don't think that there's anybody here that is going to commit to funding for instruction in classrooms at less than the 23, right? I, that's just my gut feeling. I think that we are all focused on ensuring that we're investing in the classrooms and where the children are educated, because that is the priority here when we talk about schools. However, what would be very helpful would be to see the SOQ positions in those other categories. So if we can go back to that slide with administration as the example, with the 109 or more positions, I think it is.
Summary?
Back one more. So what would be very helpful would be to see out of these positions, which are SOQ-funded and which are not, and then so on and so forth for some of those other categories.
So in one of the documents that we shared with you, we listed all of the SOQ-funded positions along with the staffing.
I'm still catching up, there was a lot.
I know, I know, along with the staffing rate that the state has given us for those positions. So it is in, it's in documentation that everybody does already have, so I don't have all that in front of me.
So that would be, I guess, the information I'd like to see is where do we stand with, and you can go back, go back a couple more slides, but actually you can go back. It would be really helpful to see where we stand with SOQ-funded positions, really everywhere else other than instructional to start off with. I think that would be something helpful to see. And if we've already got it, then I will dig in more and keep looking. I have been digging and digging and digging. I have been digging and digging and digging. But Vice Mayor Faroli, does that kind of answer what you were asking?
I guess where I'm, where I'm looking at is, and I don't intend for this to come across in any other way than just in the comment itself, so forgive me, I, if we want to appropriate by category, and we're getting questions of how does that work versus this versus that, I, for me and maybe my own ignorance, how does that differ with one check overall for everybody? If the question is, well, one person gets this much, and one person gets this much, and one person gets none at all, I, I don't see the, I struggle with that disconnect outside of it's just putting them into buckets one step earlier. So that's kind of where I'm trying to see the disconnect.
I don't think your question is, I don't think it's about the funding, because once that money comes from the state, flows through here, it goes to them, it's going to be how it's budgeted to be spent. So you got to get it on the front end, not the back end. So that breakdown's got to go on the front end of how to fund those categories, not once the check comes in.
Sure. So to speak to Mr. Patrick's point when he was doing a presentation, to get that information from you all would then, if we did your proposal right out the gate, just didn't touch it at all, did it by category, that's essentially what he was referencing.
That's, that's what's on the proposed screen.
Right.
Right. So bottom line, in each of these buckets, there are, these are the total number of positions. In each of the categories, some number of those positions are SOQ-funded, and I believe it would be the city's requirement to fully fund the SOQ-funded positions in each category. I don't think we could fund any less than that, no matter what. We would have no legal requirement to fund any more than the SOQ-funded positions in each category. What I don't think we have, and I wasn't able to tease out from the data, is by category, what is the, so by category, how many of each of these positions are SOQ-funded versus are, you know, funded with essentially local, local dollars?
A hundred percent local.
Right.
On that, I think you just, the superintendent just mentioned there was like 1.6 SOQ-funded for deputies, and there's double of that just in this list that we're first time seeing it right now. So granted, we only have the ability to look at it now, but I see three that are specifically titled deputy, which is basically double what the SOQ funding is there. And I'm not sure what the other titles are, that's the only one that happens to say deputy.
There's only two that are titled deputy unless you?
I'm reading three.
There's a third?
Oh, maybe not. Because it said deputy of equity.
That's a director.
Director. First time seeing this, I know it says, the memo on the bottom says that you got it two weeks ago, and we're just seeing it for us now. So we're kind of doing it on the fly, but not sure what other, I think that's the best place to start, is how many of those 109 positions are SOQ-funded, because the problem is the administration. I think if we look back a slide, maybe go back another slide, or maybe it's where you had the five year, the 2019?
Right here.
Yeah. So when I look at the 69,000 for instruction in 2019 versus 73 in 2023, that's about 1.3%. I look at the growth in administration of 62 up to 91, and the budgeted numbers, this isn't prospective for next year's budget, this is what it's historically been, I just calculated 9.93% of the growth in the administration attendance at health, going from 62, 6.2 million to 9.1 million. The important part is the instruction in the classroom, that grew by 1.3, the other is almost 10%. That's, that's where the heartburn kind of lies, and I think it would be, and to see how we can actually have that go to the classroom as opposed to the administration. And that's where I think a good place to begin would be one of those SOQ-funded positions. You have listed up there 109, is it 50? Is it 10? Is it 120? That'd be a good place to start.
I guess Councilmember Wilder wanted to offer something. It took a full, what was just discussed, if we did what Jeff's talking about across the board, that would give us a baseline and a dollar amount, and then the leftovers, if you will, the folks who are not SOQ, there would be a dollar amount associated with that, and then we would have our deltas to figure out what would it take to get there. And I think that's what we need to know for this piece, and it'd be very helpful for us. So thank you, forgive me.
Keep in mind, it just, it will be messy because it's 1.6.
Yeah.
Right? So there's some breakage in there, and we probably, to be on the safe side legally, want to round up in any, in those instances?
But I imagine some of these other ones, all these other positions may not be that titled, but there may not be, you know, three people that are chief financial officer, the deputy chief financial, I mean, so what those positions are, sometimes somebody doesn't just do one thing.
Absolutely.
I mean, you know, it's not like one person, if their only job is teaching kindergarten, some of the administration, they can do multi, a multiplicity of tasks that are within that same employee benefits or the same kind of thing, so absolutely.
And there's, I'm sorry, you're just, it's easy to look at SOQ funding when you're looking at it from an elementary level, because it says first grade, second grade, third grade. It gets to be a little bit trickier when you start looking at things like preventive PIR, which is prevention intervention and restoration. So who is that, right? Not every SOQ-funded dollar is easily matched to a position, so to speak. So just, that's part of what makes it messy. It's also what makes it very difficult to compare SOQ from one year to the next, because the state also changes some of their SOQ funding and how they allocate things there. So as you look at SOQ, when you go back to that document and start looking at all of the SOQ-funded, some of it's going to be very easy, because it's like English teacher, and then some of it is going to be a little bit more challenging to figure out what does that mean and how is that doing it. And I just want to make sure that we're having a total discussion about instruction, because there are Title I funds, Title II funds, Title IV funds that are not in your budget that also support instruction, which we've used, you know, for a number of years. So when you're talking about just how much money is, is going towards instruction, there's that money as well.
Dr. Wilder?
Thank you, appreciate it. Thank you so much for the information. Thank you, Greg, for the presentation. You know, when we look at the school funding, it's going to be so challenging because of the categories, because of all the funding sources. If we're just looking at funding SOQ positions, I mean, that's just to me, dangerous for our school system, for our children, if we're only trying to fund SOQ positions. I know you're correctly saying that, but it's like, if we keep kind of focusing on that, if we want to have a premier educational system, we can't just fund SOQ positions, and that's all over the state. I know they continue to talk about that, continue to try to change that formula, but this is where we are. So we just can't have a school system just funding SOQ positions. So just to make sure I'm clear, what are some of the other benefit, other resources, other than SOQ as far as position that those persons do, that are non-SOQ-funded position, whether they're administrators, whatever, how do they add value to our school system? And then other, other points, question is looking at that, is what are things we wouldn't have to give up, or things we wouldn't have for our children if we don't have all those other positions that are funded by non-SOQ funds?
Yeah. So just similar to you all, when you look at our infrastructure, so to speak, we have similar departments like you, we have transportation department, we have a payroll department. So to say, if payroll is not SOQ-funded, let's get rid of it, we might as well get rid of teachers too, because if we're not doing payroll accurately, we're not keeping anybody. If we're not doing HR accurately, again, we're either not retaining or recruiting anyone to come into the division. So there are positions that are not SOQ-funded, but similar to what you have here, they are definitely needed for the infrastructure to run the division. But what we're seeing is there are several things that are supportive for positions. So for example, we are really big on trying to up the credentials that kids have. So you all know, we pay for kids to go to the CTE academy, that's on us, that's on our dollar. We pay for kids to go to the Gulf School, that's on us, our own dollar. Other places do things differently. We provide experiences for all of our kids, and those are things that, again, they don't show up necessarily in a state funding formula that says, here is all your money for violins, go ahead and have at this whole K-12 violin program, which is another thing that we have. Our ability to offer some of our classes, when you think about our nursing program, our, our junior ROTC program and things that are, that make Lynchburg City special, our nursing program is at one school, but we can bring kids from both schools there, which is a transportation thing. We, we don't just limit it to the, to the kids who live in that neighborhood. We also have internships where our kids are going out and actually doing jobs and doing work, and we're supporting those types of things as well. The benefit of something as simple as field trips, when you think about that, that is a healthy supplement to our budget. Those are other things that we fund, that we're trying not to put the burden on our parents. But to the degree that we've heard in this town and other towns and across the nation, the real emphasis on mental health, the real impact on what's happening, not with just our children, but with our families, the, what we're seeing in this, in our community in terms of choices that people are making, young adults and, and older adults with regard to crime, that mental health, I would love to say, well, you know what, not our responsibility because it's not reading, writing, and arithmetic. However, it is our responsibility because those kids are with us. So behavioral coaches are something that are helping teachers learn how to use strategies to deal with some of these things. We have counselors and support, we've got part of it in the grant, the restorative pieces that help kids deal with these things. We have the, the concerns that we have with, we can't make families go to counseling. We can suggest it, but we can't make it. But when counselors held at our schools, we can help, we can make that better. So, but we can't do that if we don't have the personnel and the structure to do those types of things with that. Training is often not free. So if you want your teachers to teach the generation that's in front of them, so those, those three-year-olds in COVID who spend a lot of time in, in their homes are now in schools. And when I tell you, if you look at kindergarten, and I think you might have talked about it, Councilmember, Councilmember Havelson, when you see some of the behaviors that kids are bringing to kindergarten, and watch what I'm saying, bringing to kindergarten, they weren't with us, they're bringing them to kindergarten, but we're dealing with them. Helping our staff cope with that is a lot of training and a lot of assistance that you wouldn't necessarily see in an SOQ-funded model, but it is definitely needed. And if we don't do due diligence to help these kids, they're going to find a source somewhere outside of school, and that's what we don't want. And Ryan's not here, but that's my buddy. I'm trying not to keep him in high business right now.
And one thing that concerns me is that we're getting a little, I don't want to say we're getting too much in the weeds, we have a school board that we have appointed to make the decision with our superintendent, and we need to trust the knowledge of our school board to continue to make those decisions. Looking at schools all across the country, I am, they're so challenged. Some are trying to hop from one district to another for a better pay, some go for one district, just for a smaller caseload. I've heard of that. So we have some current challenges. I'm afraid it's like we want to, we want to reduce the budget, but we want you to produce more results on a reduced budget. And excuses are always, struggling with teachers, especially special ed. My family member was a head from a special ed teachers. So I understand the challenges with special ed more than any other population, I know how hard it is, how hard the caseload is, the requirements, that, I've had foster kids, most of mine are, have IEPs. I know the requirements for that, for less support, special ed teachers, that's another story. So they're challenging in getting staff members now, so we're going to reduce the budget, but we want you to do more, we want you to have better test course, but we want to give you less. That's going to be challenging, you know? So I don't want us to see our school system less. I've heard from Dr. Sam Coleman in bringing in some more areas, I try to help improve test course, improve in other ways. I know with Dr. Brown, they improved the, they brought in the other program for skis who are suspended, try to keep them in school so they're not out. You know, we got a report today from the police chief about gangs, all that kind of stuff in that area, where a 16-year-old got shot last week, a 12-year-old got shot the other week. So there are challenges in our community that are not the school system's fault, but there's, the effects are going to be on our school system, even though they're not, they're not producing that, but they have to take the aftereffects of that, you know, and working with kids who've been through that trauma, through losing a friend. So we continue to have challenges in our urban setting, our community. I want to continue to try to see what we can do to support school system. I know you have the 15, 515, was that plan?
1550, yes.
Was that again, I'm sorry?
1550.
Yeah. And what was the total cost for that?
That was probably the biggest, wait, I got to help her, I don't have to lie to So that's where we're asking about 6.4 million. There was a few other things in there that, but not much, not much stuff, mostly for staff.
And my biggest concern is if we don't make our school system competitive, even if they get bus drivers, I got a text again today that because of staff shortages, buses are going to be late. I get those texts almost every day, because there's a shortage of bus drivers. If we don't pay our bus drivers adequately, and I'm telling you, if you sit in a classroom, that's a challenge. You know, sometimes our precious jewels are sometimes are a little challenging, so for teachers to be working on our school system, they're going to go into a more, it's a calling, where you want to, I'm trying to watch my words, but sometimes in an urban school setting, it's a little challenging versus at certain other schools would not be as challenging. So because they're bringing so many more issues to our school system, like classrooms versus in other settings. So that goes to require teachers to have a little more skill, a little more just strength in how to reach this person versus at certain other settings. So I'll continue to pray for our school system, and continue to see what we can do to fund that as much as possible, because I know of all the shortages and the challenges we have in retaining teachers, retaining teachers, and compensating our bus drivers and other staff members, so that we don't be losing some of our staff members, that we can keep them and make sure they give them what they're worth. Thank you.
I have a question. The growth that was referred to in the administrative positions between 2019 and 2023, the 9% growth, I believe, Councilperson Ellis referred to, you may not have it in front of you, but offhand, do you know maybe what those specifically were, or?
Yeah, and as I, again, we, we've got this presentation slightly like an hour before we walked across the street, but when you look at some of those positions that, when you start looking at the growth, and I can speak to, at least coming in the top of my head, when you think about our director of equity in community relations, right, who is classified as admin, and when in 2021 was in the instructional budget, and you all remember, those of you who've been on council for a bit, when I first came here, one of the things that you asked for was increase transparency, clean it up, and make sure you start working, and that's what we did. We were finding things that weren't in the correct categories, let's put them where they're supposed to go, let them have transparency and report out. So one of the things that looks like it's a grow is it looks like you added this position called director of equity in community relations. Well, that person has been here for, before I even been here, and that person has been in that role. It's been a title change. So you're seeing a title change which results in them being in the correct classification that they should be in, and that's what some of that is. We have repurposed positions, so it, it's easy to look at and say, well, here is a list of positions, and here's another list of positions, and these weren't here, so they must all be new in additions, and they're not. Some of them are swap outs, some of them are repurposed, some of them are, we took this and this that we no longer needed, but we did have a need from here. So it's not as black and white as you may think when you're looking at it, just saying, well, you didn't have this before. When I started, we had two assistant superintendents in 2018. My first thing was to stand here, we were 1.8 million dollars in the hole. I was forced to cut one of those assistant superintendents. We are back now, we got two, I'm back to two now. That's five years later that we've done that. So I just say that to say that it takes a deeper dive to look at some of that, so that we're not just, we're not just going on numbers and counting and saying that. And I'm glad you brought up those nine stipends for the school board members. We have to budget for nine, but all nine don't take it. But we have to budget for nine because we never know with the next year who's going to take it. So, and that's, and then that's a stipend, but it looks like a person, right? It looks like another staff member that is up there for whatever the stipend is, is it $2,000 or whatever that is? That's, that's not a big salary for, for folks. But when you're looking at numbers, you'd be like, oh, look, nine people right there they can cut. So just that level of transparency, we need to, need to definitely.
Thank you. Any more questions?
So we've got a couple of questions.
So we've got a couple of questions. One is, you can stay back on that slide right there. So looking at the, you know, when you look at, there's a lot of different information on that here. And then I pulled average daily membership from nineteen to twenty-two and threw that in with the changes in the administration funding. So from two thousand and nineteen, what we actually spent in twenty-two, which is what we actually spent, that's the last year we know, this year we know what we actually spent because we're still in twenty-three, there was a forty-nine percent increase per pupil in administrative budget. Pretty significant when I look at that. So that means for every child, the increase in administrative funding increased by forty-nine It's just something that stands out to me.
Are you counting numbers of people versus numbers of children?
Average daily membership right out of what staff prepared to put in this budget. So looking at the administrative funding total divided by the average daily membership, there's been a forty-nine percent increase. It was seven hundred and eleven dollars and ten cents in two thousand and nineteen per pupil. It was a thousand and fifty-six dollars and thirteen cents per pupil in twenty twenty-two. That's a forty-nine percent increase. And that's just something that stands out at me. And I just wanted to, not really asking a question, but more or less bringing that up. So the question that I do have is looking at the transportation number because Dr. Ronald wrote a lot of good points. There has been plenty of issues. I get those same text messages and emails about the buses. So in the proposed budget, there's about six point six million, I think, that was passed for transportation. Is that our proposal or was that your proposal?
I think it's in the proposed budget and it's our proposal. So transportation, when we look at what we're asking as a starting salary for our bus drivers, it's gone up from ten dollars and eighty-six cents an hour. Our proposed for next year is sixteen fourteen an hour as a starting.
So that's, so the six point six million roughly request, that is, that's your request? I'm assuming that that's.
Are you talking about the six point five nine nine? That's up there? Anything that's up there is what we submitted to you.
Well, I know that the city manager's proposed school funding was less than what you guys had asked for.
Correct, correct. But what you have is the result of what we sent to you. So those are our documents of what we have.
So my question is, at that six point six million dollar ask that increased four hundred and sixty-five thousand in transportation, are we going to stop getting those text messages and emails?
We get more bus drivers. We need more bus drivers. I don't know what to tell you about that. We need more bus drivers.
I mean, do you feel confident that the resource is being provided at that, that additional four hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars is going to help you get the more bus drivers to be able to?
I think anything that we can do to increase the starting salary or salaries, because we didn't do compression, so we tried to make sure that that went through so that our, even our veterans would want to stay and not feel like paying newbies and not paying us, is a step in the right direction. But I also read and look at what the state of bus drivers across the nation is. And even in places where they're paying twenty-five dollars an hour and five thousand dollar signing bonuses, those places are still struggling too. Are they making progress? Yes. But is somebody hiding a whole bunch of bus drivers somewhere that I don't know about? I mean, I have not seen that. I would love.
Send out a search park.
Yes.
That's a little too far because I need my CDL driver.
So I mean, that's just a question that I have, you know, like if we make that additional investment of four hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars to solve that problem, I just want to know.
I would tell you what bus drivers tell me. Put more money on the table, Dr. Edwards. Come on, let's start moving. And they've been cooperative where at least they've seen an increase each year. I think it would be very disheartening if they were just frozen and not seeing progress. It's progress being made. But let's face it, sixteen fourteen is what Lynchburg City Schools' living wage for a single person with no children. At sixteen fourteen, I mean, that's where we are. We're not, we're not really knocking it out the park, but we're moving up.
So then moving on to the next topic, the, you mentioned the behavioral health stuff. So there's significant resources being invested in behavioral health moving forward, at least that's the plan. Are we talking about hiring actual LCS employees to undertake this? Or are we looking more towards contracting out these services on the private market?
Yes and no. So we have folks that we've hired that are in our buildings, that are working directly with our staff, that are helping children, that are providing counseling support. We also have contracted services that are in our buildings that we've piloted in some buildings and depending upon what the need is, and we could use more, which are in the moment. So if a child is in distress in the moment and you're a classroom teacher and you have nineteen kids in your class, twenty kids in your class, you want help in the moment, you want help long-term, you want to understand what teaching practices you can use to also help out with that. So the answer to your question is all yes, that we have that. Now, as far as being very cautious with the folks who are in the grant that we just got to hire, again, that's grant funded and we do that upfront with folks and let them know it's grant funded. So it's not, you know, it's a right now thing, but it's a five-year grant, but it's not a guarantee, nothing is sustainable that much.
So I guess that brings me to the next question. And you said there's still some, I guess, cares or ESRA funds or whatever.
Yeah, that we're continuing to do.
What kind of amount of those?
I don't have all, I don't bring all the cares numbers in front of me.
It is significant.
It's decent, I mean, but there are plans associated with that because each of those cares have.
So would it be an option to, I guess, use those instead of adding to or new programs or new services or new people? Is there any way that those funds would be eligible to backfill what we've already got?
That. We actually did that in, what, two years ago, I sat in front of you and presented a budget that said, we're going to go level funding, flat funding, and we're not, we absorb the raises. And it was at the time when we were not sure about student tax and a whole bunch of other things that were going on, both city and schools. And we said, we understand that this is a risky move to actually kind of supplement what you have to keep what you have at that time. And I think it was in twenty twenty-two or going into twenty twenty-two, and then we projected that by twenty twenty-four, this was not a long-term solution. So we have done that in the past with ESRA funds because it was allowed so that you did not have to lose staff, that you could actually keep staff on payroll, the staff that you needed using CARES funding when we first got it in the twenty twenty-one, twenty-two going forward. And if I have my notes, but there was a presentation that I did for city council where you can actually see graphically where I'm like, here's where we're using CARES money for doing this. I remember, Mary Jane, you saying, I don't know, I don't know if I'm a fan of that, you know, and we, and my school board too, I will go on record to say. But at the time, it was asked, like, you have all of this CARES money. Can you use some of this CARES money right now to take care of some of your problems that you have right now? The problem with that is two years later, we have to have historical knowledge and say, remember, we did this. And that's where we are right now.
So that's still an option because it's not being exercised in this.
We're not doing it. We're trying to come off of CARES now because there's no, there's no future CARES. And we only did it in one year to really just say, and at the time, we thought we were helping both ourselves and the city by saying we were going to ask for less by offsetting this.
Dr. Edwards, I know you all have to go for your retreat, so unless someone has a question they really want to answer, I want to be respectful of your time. Everybody okay or?
I was going to ask what is, do you, does staff have what they need? And if not, what can we offer to help drive this home?
So taking in all the conversation, it's kind of how the process has gone. So we're carrying right now, based on the adjusted proposal, a number of two point one. The adjusted proposal also asked us to put together categorical funding as opposed to lump sum. So what we need help from you about, you and your peers, is if we move into categorical funding, where and how do you want to impact those categories? Right? So kind of back to this same slide here. So if what, what we, if the conversation today didn't bear out enough information to kind of help you make some decisions, Councilmember Missions was asking about transportation, whether or not there's resources enough. Realize if we want to, I'll use words, put back things or begin to fund other things, obviously the number changes because Dr. Edwards in the school board proposed seven million-ish. I proposed three million, and what we have is two point one. And so if we start to consider other things, then that number changes. So I think helpful for me is kind of, are we, are we are where we are? And if we are, then we're moving ahead. So I've got two point one in my head. And then from there, if it's something a bit different about other things that maybe you're interested in, then we're going to have to figure that out. And then you got to help us figure out which category of the nine, is that right? Of the nine, do you want to adjust to do what you want as far as how to fund them this year? So that's, that's kind of the, and if what you need is more information, we have the twenty-fifth, and we can work together to get the proper information. We can do that, but kind of feedback there.
Yeah, I think for me, the importance of seeing as best could be articulated, the foundation for SOQ, standard of quality positions and the dollars associated, and to make sure the rest can as well, the dollars associated, see what that translates to. And then we'll have further grounds to move forward down this path for categorical funding, which I am still very much in favor of. I think one of the things, one of my takeaways to put a bow on this, one of my takeaways, I just feel like we're doing, trying to do too much instead of focusing on the classroom. I know we are focusing on the classroom in many ways, and I don't want to dispute a lot of the things that are being done by many folks who are doing good work. But I think, I think we're just trying to be too many things to too many people. And if we can really prioritize, we want to be the leader in the classroom, put emphasis there. I really believe that's where we can make the greatest amount of change and emphasis for the public school system in Lynchburg. So that's just kind of where my takeaway is at this point. I would also say there's probably room to have another meeting on this. I know folks aren't too thrilled about that notion of that, but I think adding in another meeting on May second for us to continue revising and going over this information to make sure we have this all squared away is probably prudent. So to put a bow on it, May second, I think we need to continue to prioritize the classroom more than anything else. If that means a million dollars to get into the classroom, I'm in favor of it. And then I know there's a third component in that, but that was just more of a statement, I guess, from my part, that I think we're just trying to do too much for too many and let's focus on, you know, a laser focus on the classroom, not, try not to diminish what others are doing. That's my mindset is we move forward, if that is helpful.
Thank you. Is there any more oxygen in the room? Yeah. I'm just not going to be so presumptuous to think that I know more about how to do this budget than people who have lived it for twenty, thirty, forty years and really know what is needed in the classroom. So I would not support the category. Well, excuse me, I was speaking.
I thought you were finished, I'm sorry. Madam Mayor.
Go ahead.
I mean, if you want to respond.
Madam Mayor, I would just ask through you, if Councilmember Nolan, what she implied by, is there any oxygen left in the room?
Yes, sir. I was asking if you had any time left to speak.
Okay. I just wanted to say that I think the schools would just love to be able to just educate the children. That would be, oh my God, that would be wonderful. The problem is, it's a community. That's the problem. And they've got to take what they get. We can't just pick Sally. We got to pick Shaquille, we got to pick everybody in our community, handicap or not, IEP or not. We can't exclude because, oh, I want to educate you, but you have IEP. I can't educate you. You don't meet my qualification. They would love to be able to, but we can't, we're a community. We have to take all the kids with the baggage. I'm not going to take you because you have a behavior problem. You can't come here. It's called a community. We have to take everybody that comes through those doors. And in order to do that, we're in as a community, as people of faith and want to help others, we have to, I'm going to help my community. That's what we have to do. So I applaud you. I want to do what we can to support the school system. I want to make sure that we have the resource to keep the teachers and bus drivers and secretaries that we have and janitors, because all of them are crucial and all of them are valued. And I also want to see, another problem to see, what happens, and there's certain money coming from the state that you, the city requires to put in certain funds. I want to make sure we meet those requirements, whatever that is. I want to make sure we meet those requirements, that we get those funds from the state as well. Thank you.
So with that, you know, I know there's lots of just discussion, but the big picture is when I look back twenty-three years ago, I looked at Easty Glass High School was ranked like in the top ten percent of the country. I look and now, twenty, thirty years later, millions and millions more poured in as the budget has grown, we're now down to a two at greatschools.org. I look at that quality of what has been happening, and so we can't just do the same thing. And so when I hear, you know, just kind of saying, okay, well, let's just throw in another two point one million on there, I think we need to start with twenty twenty-three because I think what you mentioned before with all the CARES funding, with all the extra other positions that can be in there, I think we need to be starting with the local funding at where we were in twenty twenty-three, not the two point one million extra. Because what we need to do is really kind of change some things to really just focus on the classroom as opposed to just saying, let's give more money. And there's lots of problems, I get it. But when we're looking at the big picture and we're hearing from citizens that used to be in the school system that have left, that speaks a lot. When you now have a forty percent particip, or forty percent that aren't participating, that tells me something. That isn't just the next little incremental program or this thing or that thing like we're kind of talking about now. The big picture is what's happened over twenty, thirty years, when money has skyrocketed and quality has gone down. At the same time, I look at some of the neighbors, I get it, different. I see those numbers are up. And I, and I see the fact that it's been always, we need yet another one of these or another one of these, or here's the latest problem. So the reality of it is just saying, let's put another five and a half percent more than last year's, which was more than the year before and more than the year before and kept on growing. When we're looking at the SOQ and the required local effort, as Councilmember Wilder was just referring to, that number is about twenty million. There's forty. What are we getting for it? That's the question. I mean, we want to say, what actual are we getting? I appreciate the effort. The effort is fantastic. The effort is the attempt. We got to start looking at graduation rate. We got to look at the SOL testing scores. We got to look at passing on time. You know, we got to look at the fact that there's actual discipline in the schools and forty percent of the school-aged children aren't saying, forget it, we're going elsewhere. That is troubling. And I recognize at budget time, it's always, you know, it's always just about the money, it seems like. But the reality of it is, what we've been doing for twenty, thirty years doesn't work. It's gone in the opposite direction. We need to change. And so with that, when we're looking at making sure that we focus on the kids getting to school at time with transportation, and as Vice Mayor Foral, they said, making sure there's enough resources in the classroom to actually instruct, make sure there's discipline that says, hey, when there's trouble, we need to, we need to make sure we focus on the twenty kids in class that want to learn, not spending all your time with the one that is disruptive. So with these resources that are coming there, and when we look at what was the SOQ-funded positions, we're not looking back to, you know, and I realize the hyperbole, but sometimes we say, oh, we're going back to SOQ, just only SOQ. What's the SOQ-funded position? About eight hundred? What's that, sixteen hundred? Not talking about getting rid of eight hundred. We're talking about something that's competitive and manageable and moderate, not just, you know, throwing more money. So I think this is going to be helpful, you know, for over the years, these last twenty years that I've watched, it's been more money and less results. And we're not just putting the blame, but we can't just say, oh, well, more money will solve it. If it wasn't, all our problems would have been solved. We would have the best scores ever. And we need some changes. And so that requires a little bit of discipline, some of the items that Superintendent mentioned about payroll and whatnot. Some of the items that Superintendent mentioned about payroll and whatnot, several years ago, we talked about consolidation of resources. We talked about the city has a whole department. The schools has the same duplicative department. Maybe we can consolidate. Maybe we can outsource wherever we possibly can to make sure that we sharpen the pencil, make sure that we're using our taxpayer resources wisely, and making sure that we're getting the best education for those kids. And that's the issue and that is what we need to focus on. So just back to the point of, I'm not in agreement with just saying, hey, 2.1 million more. Because you look at what the required local effort was last year versus this year, it didn't go up that much. Even if last year was good, even if last year was perfect, we can't be accelerating what the state is funding for the required local effort more, over and above what they're saying. That's got to be the place that we at least kind of continue to think. Now, if we were at the very bottom of the barrel or just at the minimum required local effort and it goes up, absolutely got fun more. But when we look at the required local effort, the required local match, all of those items, we're not looking at such an exorbitant increase by saying we're going up 2.1 million, especially when again, there's another decline in enrollment, so.
I know, we've kept you over 10 minutes. I want to wrap up. I just want to tell you thank you. And I know that, I mentioned before that Mr. Taylor, Councilman Taylor and I have gotten a chance to go take some tours of the schools. And I've been educated greatly on talking to the teachers directly and hearing from them specifically on a lot of the issues in the classrooms, that I think has been hugely helpful to understanding what they're really facing and what the problems. And you have some amazing teachers who love these students and I think are trying so, so hard. And when you hear things about, you know, kids that only get 30 minutes of math a day or 30 minutes of reading a day and due to problems that are not their, that are not their own, they haven't caused and that's the only support they have. They don't have anybody at home in the afternoons or on the weekends or in summers to help support that learning and, and then of course, they fail tests and it makes a lot of sense. So I know the teachers are, a lot of them are trying their hardest and don't want their kids failing. So I have, you know, compassion towards the really great teachers that are trying all they can. And there's, you know, we've seen the rise of behavioral problems, obviously, in classrooms that are a challenge, everybody. And a lot of these kids are struggling. So I appreciate the effort and hard work, but I know y'all are trying to leave your retreats, so.
One thing I'd like to just kind of throw in there, just, you know, I've heard what Dr. Wilder mentioned about kids, you know, saying that if we weren't going to be able to serve these kids with IEDs and so forth, I just want to point out that there was, that the school divisions are doing last year, a reduction in special education funding. And I know for a fact that, you know, every child with an IED is getting served. Every child with those needs is getting taken care of. And I just want to point that out. And one of the things just came to mind, just to maybe look into, regional partnerships like the governor's school. Will we be making sure that the counties that are participating are paying a fair share? Is that something we're looking into?
There's an MOU that we have with the GovSchool. They set their own tuition rates for students and how they pay for students is up to them. But how we fund our students and we pay that rate for GovSchool. So that's extra money that we spend on kids on the other end for services that are enriching.
When's the last time that MOU was updated?
I don't know.
Maybe someone will look.
Part of it is a leasing agreement, the same thing with the rural.
Thank you very much, everyone that stayed extra. Hope your retreat goes well.
Good night.
Thank you. Mayor, next up is Mitch Knuckles, our Commissioner of the Revenue, who's talking about senior disabled and veteran tax relief.
Thank you.
Think he's back behind the wave of Lynchburg City's staff?
Been waiting a whole week for this.
Did we give him enough of a two-minute warning?
Yeah, he's here.
He just can't get, he can't get in because there.
There he is.
Got all the instructions. Commissioner, welcome, sir. Thank you.
Hello.
How do you? All right. Madam Mayor, Vice Mayor, I'm Mitch Knuckles, Commissioner of Revenue for the City of Lynchburg. And it's my pleasure to give you all a brief overview of our current real estate tax relief program. The manager mentioned disabled veterans as well, but that's, that's a separate piece. The disabled veteran is actually an exemption from real estate tax, where the real estate tax relief program is truly relief of the tax. And currently, this is a great chart here. I've broken it down by fiscal year and the number of applicants and the dollar amount of money. And you'll notice that from 19 to 20 and 20 to 21, the applicants, qualifying applicants were fewer. And then in 22 and 23, there's an increase and an increase. And part of that reason, several years ago, the real estate tax relief was capped at $32,500 for income. And at that time, I wanted to build in an increasing factor that increased the income amount by the increase in social security, but council just wasn't ready for that yet. And then in 21, 22, is when we changed it from 32,500 to 40,000 on the income. And we also, from that year forward, we built in a growth factor that would increase the income limitations by the increase in social security. So.
How do you go back? Thank you.
So, and we also in 22 increased the net worth from 60,000 to 100,000. And that allowed more folks to get into the program. And that's, this one is the number of folks that were disqualified. And again, if you notice from 19 to 20 and 20 to 21, those numbers were increased. And that's when the income was capped at 32,500. And then when we did from 32,500 to 40, you see a huge decrease there. And this past year was 42,400. And part of this current fiscal year increase is when the reassessment notices were mailed out. It's listed on the reassessment form, our phone number for real estate tax relief. So we've probably had at least 100 folks apply since the reassessment notices went out. And unfortunately, several of those folks didn't qualify. They were over the limit. But I encourage everybody to file for this very reason. When we do have an opportunity to have a conversation about real estate tax relief, at least I have some supporting information for those that don't qualify. But obviously, you know, if you read the form and it says your income can't exceed 42,400 and it does, most likely they're not going to apply. So the number of folks out there that are disqualified and need relief are obviously going to be more than what I have there. And then I did our surrounding localities with the income limitations and net worth. And as you can see, we're pretty much on average in that, along with the net worth, pretty much on average. And we also, two years ago, is when we set the maximum amount of relief, which was $2,500 and that's the equivalent of a house, $225,000 house. That's the maximum amount of relief that can be provided.
And we've got the highest by far and above.
Yes, yes. And then this is the Virginia first cities and it just shows the income limitations and where we're at in that group. And the average to the right there is the 46, 495. So we're right in the ballpark with the average across the state. And this is the net worth limitation, the average being the 153 and we're currently at 100. And again, two years ago is when it was increased from 60,000 to 100,000. And with that, I'll be glad to answer any questions.
So this was something that I had kind of initiated a conversation with Greg about because I remember a few years ago when the taxes, the real estate taxes were being discussed and even now, I feel like a core group of the people that were the most concerned initially were the senior citizen community on truly fixed incomes as far as like social security only and a very limited pension, retirement of some sort. So not people with portfolios and investments that consider themselves on fixed incomes because they're no longer working, but still have, you know, an economic advantage of some sort. But truly, you know, people that we heard saying things like, we literally can't afford $50 increase because we don't have a life relief or people like that. And we're, and we're hearing from those people again now, you know, people that are asking like, can we not, can you even make it a rule that we not pay at all, you know, because of our age and so forth? And so that was an initial conversation that Greg and I started having prior to the tax rate being proposed. So that was why really we started the conversation with you, or I think you had started the conversation. So Greg, I think you had come back with a proposed adjustment that you had set at, what, what was the?
Yes, ma'am. Thank you, Madam Mayor. What we were looking at is primarily if we lowered the real estate tax rate to 89 cents, substantial, both tax rate reduction and relief. If we, if it were going to be at some level higher than that, that maybe there was some targeted relief we'd look at. If we wanted a richer program, right? And there's, there's no science here, it's more of an art. You know, in discussions, Mitch, Donna and I, we discussed kind of the upper band of what that might look like would be a program of income around 60 grand and net worth of around 200,000. That would be a very rich program compared to our.
Rich meaning expanding the parameters?
Yeah, it would be, it would be, it would be a substantial increase in the benefit.
More robust.
More robust, there you go. Rich program is probably not a good term.
Right.
Apologies there. But, and in thinking about what that might mean, I still think that you would see very few folks disqualified based on net worth. But we would probably pick up a substantial chunk of qualifying residents between that 45,000 and that $60,000 a year mark. That's, that is a, I'd be willing to bet there were probably almost as many folks in between 45 and 60 as there were between 0 and 45, right? No way of knowing what that would cost until we implemented the program, because we just don't have the demographic data that would be able to kind of suss that out for us. But, you know, just thinking logically, having some experience in this area, Mitch, Don and I were thinking that you'd probably double the cost of the program overall. So I think we spent $580,000, $590,000 in FY 2023. That would probably double in cost, up to 1.2. And then I think we would see a reduction in cost incrementally on top of that, just simply because the tax rate would have been decreased. So the value of the relief is going to be a little bit less. But I think if you went with a program with those parameters, 60 and 200, again, it's a very robust program, we would be smart to budget probably 1.1, 1.2 million dollars. And it's just a matter of, is the increase in the value of that program a high enough priority for council that we'd want to give up something else?
So currently we're seeing about 500,000, you said?
Right, at 600.
600, so we'd be doubling. So we'd be looking for an additional 600,000 approximately. And, sorry, let me just read that. And the relief would be up to a tax bill of $2,500. They would not have to pay. Anything above and beyond that, they would have to pay. Okay. So that would be, I mean, that would be significant for people. Correct? I mean, that's pretty.
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
Yeah, huge savings for someone.
I got a question. Can you back up a couple slides? Keep going. So my question is, how are we defining net worth on this?
Net worth, this would be money that's in the bank, savings, CDs.
Assets as well?
Yes.
Not the house.
But, oh, yeah. The net worth does not include the value of the house and up to one acre of land.
Okay. That was something that I wanted to make.
Sorry about that.
That was the one thing that I was concerned about because.
Now, that's, that's requirement across the state.
Because I want to make sure that we're not calculating somebody's net worth of their home when they're trying to keep their home with relief. That answers, that answers my question.
Thank you. So, and one other thing. The, so you mentioned like 225,000, the new tax rate of 89 cents, that's really like more like 280,000.
It is definitely going to be a more substantial value of house, yes.
And so it's, that's the beauty and the beauty is focusing for all the property owners and all the residents as opposed to, you know, more carving out and the carving out is for those in greatest need. And if we look at our city income as a whole, I think lots of times when we get the reports would give us the composite index. I think our per capita income not too long ago was 22,000, household income was 46,000. So we're right, even at that, we're right at the household income in the city at that level, so.
Thank you.
I have two questions. So keeping, asterisk, this is not what I want to do, keeping the property tax rate, the real estate rate at $1.11, if we lowered the max component of this, hold that lever to, let's pretend, 2,000, that would net a savings, if you will, because you're now lowering the total contribution. Is that, is that correct? Does that make sense?
We only have 13 residents that their tax bill exceeds 2,500. I don't know the number between 2,000 and 2,500, but I do know we only have 13 in the program that exceed the 2,500 threshold.
Does the strategy make sense? As in lower the threshold, meaning for those who would be within that threshold, you've now netted that return of savings, if you will. Does that make sense? I know you don't know who's in the 2,000 to 500, excuse me, 2,000 to 2,500 category, but let's pretend there were 50 people in there.
There would be savings. It's just, we'd have to calculate. It may not be that meaningful.
Would it be possible to get that? And then realizing it's not going to be $1.11, what would be, would the number of people in these pots, 2,000 to 2,500, 2,500 plus, would the numbers of residents and taxpayers change because the input of data, in this case, real estate taxes is changing?
Well, I mean, if the rate stayed at $1.11, obviously lots, lots more are going to pay more than a 2,500.
Right. So if it goes to 89, for example?
Right. So what you're seeing.
How does that play?
Let's, let's kind of just think logically about fiscal '24. So you're going to see an increase in the minimum income from 42 to 46. Something like that. You're going to see the average tax bill decrease. So you're likely going to see more eligible participants for the program at a lower average benefit. So I don't think we would want to budget for savings in the program, although it's not unlikely that we might see one. And if we do see one going forward, maybe next year, we look at, if it's substantial, we look at lowering the budget.
I was more if, I was more going this direction and trying to work through it. If council desired to pursue something related to this, find more options within this program to pull levers and adjust things, so. Thanks for playing along.
And I guess kind of right off of what the Vice Mayor said is, what would it look like if that max dollar amount, instead of it being the $2,500 fix, would be the amount of real estate taxes to cover a home value up to 225,000 like it used to? What would, I mean, I think that's kind of how I'm seeing the question phrase, if that makes sense?
I guess you don't really want to keep moving a lot of parts. We've looked at this over, I've been on here for about 20 years, and I think this is the best it's been, quite frankly, because it automatically adjusts. It automatically has some inflation for income and it's helpful for those, the most in need. It's, and if we want to help more people in need, what we do is lower the rate even more to help more people in need. more to help more people in need, because there's our average income, I think, our median income is like 46,000 in the city, so it's not, we're right up to that amount already, so...
And the reduction in the real estate tax will keep the max relevant for longer.
And as Mitch said, there wasn't many that are hitting the max, or none of them, or very few.
Probably 13. And Donna just calculated, the 2,000 number is that 89 cents on a 225 house. So that's, that's...
20% reduction. Exactly, 2,000, yep.
$2.15.
Right. Sorry, just took me a second. Thank you.
And I guess with the people that have that much of a need, you'd hate to have them have to get out of their house, because they couldn't come up with an extra one, so...
And then, just to throw this out, I mean, some of those folks that are in a, what was a 225 house, the house may now be 275. That's going to change, you know, same.
So now, that would go up to 280, that's what I, 280 or whatever, I just got that a second ago. At 89, so that's good.
Due to the reassessment.
Sure, sure, that's why I shake my head.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks Mitch. Thank you, sir.
Was there something else you wanted to add?
No, no, that was, that was the, that was the topic, that was the topic that you had raised, and that was the...
Yeah, I mean, and the main thing was just, again, looking for other opportunities to help people who are struggling, and, and looking for ways around it, because it looks like other cities have obviously adjusted their, their parameters, which makes sense to do, so, and I think, again, we've seen quite a few people in that, in these categories, raise concerns repeatedly about meeting that relief, and so, I think it's going to be considered. Okay, moving on.
And it would be nice to see, measuring up against other cities, what's the difference in the median income in those cities and things of that nature, so, I'm really comparing apples to apples with that.
Right, and we'll do this also by a comparison with cities that are actually of a population similar to ours, not necessarily just simple counties, because they're going to have different values.
For cities, it still blows me away that, like, I mean, that's so similar, and, you know. But yeah, thank you, yeah.
Great, thanks again for Mitch and him having been patient with us. So Mayor, transitioning now to this next presentation. Donna is going to, I'm going to make it as simple as what's in, what's out, okay? Because proposed on March 14th, received an adjusted proposal the week of March 27th. We've had conversations since then that have either shown interest or been interested, I just want to make sure we're getting it right. Even today, Councilman Hegelson, that adjusted proposal had 2.1 in it, he said, you know, hey, I'm not, let's not consider that. So, part of this opportunity here with Donna is just to kind of walk you through kind of where we think we're supposed to be, and if we're not where we need to be, you guys please give us the feedback. So Donna, would you please?
Yes. So, this slide is straight out of Greg's presentation, that this was calculating the budget gap based on the memo, the budget performance expectations of the city manager. So what I want to break down for you is the expenditure adjustments of the $5.3 million and the technical adjustments of the $545,000. So, what's in, and these are all compared to the manager's proposed budget. So, there's 2.1 million in for Lynchburg City Schools, and that is increased funding over prior year, and that's the funding for the local match for the state proposed increase. There's 2.6 million dollars in, that's a 5% general wage increase for general city employees, but it excludes fire and police because they're, they will be under the new progression compression plan. There's $3 million for public safety employees, and this is your targeted compression progression for both the fire department and the police department, and also the funding for the increased starting pay for the 911 call takers. So that's what's in. Okay, questions?
What's in from the proposed budget additions that you originally gave to us in January?
That it's adjusted based on what was required from the memo that was the budget performance expectations of the city manager.
I would say the only difference, Madam Mayor, would be, as opposed to 3 million for LCS, it's 2.1, everything else is...
Correct.
Correct, that is correct. So, on my what's out...
So this is from the, sorry.
Oh, no, go ahead, I'm sorry, go ahead.
So from the letter that you were given dated March 21st, correct?
Yes.
Those, that's all that's included from that?
That's what's in.
And then the nuance that the Vice Mayor pointed out, and I think we're a bit more clear, is that my proposed was 3 million, what was in the expected, in the adjusted proposal is 2.1.
So it's minus 9, not 900, though?
Yeah, so I'm going to talk about what's out.
Okay, so can I clarify something before you go on? So last week, when I asked you, what was, where all the additional public safety positions were, because with my eyes, that worked well, I didn't see them, and I was corrected by several council members, and they said, "It's in there." Was it in there?
I think Donna, in this presentation, is going to give you a very detailed...
I'm going to tell you specifically which positions are out.
Okay, cool, thank you.
Okay, so that's all that's in. Okay? So what's out, to explain the 5.3 million from that first slide, so 900, and I can send you these slides, 950,000...
And hopefully, the school one too would come to us, because, I really don't like, hopefully, we can get, not get in the habit of getting all this, especially if there's numbers that are here.
Absolutely.
And we're looking at it now, and we're kind of, you know, trying to talk about it, it's very, I mean, it's patently unfair for all of us that are kind of looking at these things, and you've been working on it for a while, and we get it right here. It's a very bad look, too, so I hope I can stop that.
If I, if I may, Councilman Hegelson, so, we're trying to, with the meetings meeting each week, between the questions posed and what we send as responses, also get prepared for the next reconciliation based on the questions that have been asked since then. We are finding ourselves actually making changes as we walk in the door. Our hope, our desire would be to have things in that bucket that Thursday prior, but we are hustling to make sure that we're staying ahead of the requests.
And if it doesn't happen, and you don't have things like today's meeting, for example, I know I got the email that said, discussions about last week that were departments looking at reduction and being more efficient with their budget, you don't have that, so sometimes when those things aren't there, then we don't just have to have a meeting because of its schedule, but it'd be nice to have a meeting where we could review things ahead of time, and that could be just to say, "Hey, we don't have it yet, let's punt on this week, and we'll go to next week."
And then, what I'd say, just Councilman Hegelson and I, I hear you on this, we have a trajectory that we're upon currently, that has the two hearings scheduled for May, that we have to meet the state expectation that we adopt a budget by the end of the, 30 days this side of the end of the fiscal year, so, using the Tuesdays, and we can add specials if that would help, and, again, it is not my intent nor the staff's intent to kind of have it here for you flat, I'm sorry about that, but we really, between questions posed, getting answers, getting them back to you, like today, we sent you a gang report that was asked about, we sent you questions and answers to the questions you posed at previous meetings, did that today, plus made sure that the presentations and the data that's informed, that's Greg sorting through all the information from Lynchburg City Schools, Greg being one person, to make sure that we can take all that, the Councilmember missions talked about digging through some stuff, and he's still digging through it, we're doing the same, and I'm reminding you guys are part-time, we're full-time, so we're trying to, in our full-time best, give you, you know, pithy stuff, that's not two of twos that you guys can really wrap your heads around. So, I hear you, Councilman Hegelson, make sure to get it here.
Can I just clarify really quick? This will be posted, all of these will be posted on our council meeting website and your board portal as soon as the meetings start.
Thank you.
Can you back up one slide? I just want to put, so, what we're looking at there is 3, 7.74 million, so, that accounts. Okay, all right.
And, I'm sorry, but can I have me here, Greg? I'm sure everybody's following slides. The mayor brings up a good point. I had clarified in preceding documentation, saying I had missed something, and I don't see it listed here, so before we...
Yes.
Before we all jump...
Let's move to the next slide.
Before we all jump the gun on, wait a minute, what was, maybe it had been said last week, I want to clarify, like, you know, I goofed, that was my bad for missing something, so, you know, let's go, I would recommend, let's get through the presentation, hear it all, and then have a discussion.
So, just quickly to that point, because I agree with you, you've seen the presentation, part of it is the pace at which that we're moving, right? And the information that's coming at us from different, from different ways. Your emails after the, after the adjusted proposal, kind of making clarifications. We're going to go back to just the base proposal to make sure that we understood what that was, and then from there, kind of build back the emails that came from you, maybe some of the sentiments that were sent from the day of, those type of things, but use that as the basis here to make sure that we understand from each of you the things that we're either missing or we didn't hear quite right. So, you did send, and you did put qualifiers in there as to what things you want to back in, and made it, oops, I think about the sheriff, but, I just want to make sure that, because we're having a tough time on our end with just how quickly things are moving, and even changing today, to make sure that we have all the stuff that we need to make sure what's in, what's out.
So here's what I'm going to be very candid about, I do not want this slide to go forward and say what's out, and there are commons attorney's positions, sheriff positions, and police department positions that are out, because Brian, in his professional reporting styles, will say, "This is what the slide said," and it is abundantly clear that this council does not want to go that direction. So, why is this presentation then, at some future point, going to say, "This is out," when it clearly is not the direction this council wants to go?
I guess we need to move forward then, so Donna can show us?
Well, and, well, to show they're out, it's out.
I mean, I just want to be candid, like, you know, if, if folks are taking notes here, which they are, and, oh, what's out, and I'm going to get a call from the sheriff and the council attorney saying, again, "You've told me three times that this is going to be in, and now it's out, what's the deal?"
If four of you say something that's out is in, then it'll be in at the end of the day. Yeah, it's in. So, it's in, but we, I have to go back, and it, so there is going to be a slide that says things are out. We've had since then several different meetings, that then some, things changed. So I take something, a physical piece of paper that says, "Here are the expectations, build a budget around these expectations," which we did, right? Now, there were then subsequent changes made by everyone as to things that are needed to ensure that we have the proper bottom line what's in, there is going to be a slide, Vice Mayor, that says something's out. You have all since said that, they're in. We need to make sure that we have all the right things in. This isn't, this isn't a gotcha moment, this isn't, I'm not trying to make anybody feel perplexed or whatever, it just really is practically on our end, we want to get it right. We really want to get it right.
Okay, and respectfully, the right thing would be to hear what you've heard from, I think, all seven.
Yeah.
Those positions specifically are in, so I, I'm sorry, I'm a little bit ticked.
And that's fair.
Why is there going to be a document before this public community saying, after all the nonsense that's gone back and forth, attorney generals comments, back and forth with council, miscommunications on my part, which I own, and back, all the, it's not, why? Why, why is there going to be a presentation saying, "It's not in"? Bogus.
Okay, here's my deal though, okay?
And so, before you do slip to that slide, I just would like to, because what you've got is 12.3 million dollars more than last year, right? 3 million is more for public safety, all the positions, the council for all they mentioned, all those positions. Now we're getting that bucket full of that 12.3 million. Those are the items that are first.
So...
I got, I got a chime here, and I just, I just really, I just don't appreciate the, what appears to be political opturing that's going on here. You know, it's, we have a baseline, we have a budget, and the budget is right here. It's last year's budget. That is the baseline, right? And there's people trying to say that we're cutting things. We're not cutting anything. We are taking and collecting an additional 12.4 million dollars in revenue from our citizens than we did in last year's budget. And while I know that there are certain people here that want to politically posture and say that we're trying to cut things, there have been many of us that have been very clear on what is supposed to be in this budget, and that is the starting point. So, I'm inclined to agree with the Vice Mayor on this, and if we are going to put a slide up to drill in over and over again, this isn't in, when you've heard from all of us that this should be in, because we have an additional 12.3 million dollars to spend, then I just don't see what the point is. I mean, we are providing more money to the bureaucracy from the taxpayer base. With that additional money, what we just saw on the previous slide was 7.74 million dollars spent out of that 12.3 billion. And there are other items that we have said that we want on there. However, we're getting ready to see a slide that says they're not on there.
Great news, we're going to stop, we're going to stop the presentation, okay? Because I'm not politically posturing. If the implication is that I am, I'm not. What I'm trying to do is to ensure, as the city manager, the professional person, that I understand exactly what you and your peers want to accomplish. And what I was given was an adjusted proposal, practically, it showed certain things and other things weren't in there. And since then, absolutely true, absolutely true. More of you have said that they're, they're in, right? And I just want to make sure what they are. So Donna, don't do another slide, please. Why don't we take the time here, if it's okay with Mayor, Vice Mayor, to understand just exactly what's in, okay?
Winter, can I, can I just interrupt for a second?
Yes, ma'am.
Because I'm not sure who, where the accusations were, if that was toward you or me, but it doesn't matter. I think we need to clarify who actually needs to even be in this conversation, because four people had, have had a conversation about this 12 million dollars. Three of us have not. Three of us have not been a part of that budget conversation of what's in, what's out, of the 12 million dollars, where it's supposed to go. Three of us have not. My voice has been silenced. I can't speak for the two of you, so I won't. You guys can say what you want to say.
I think you said it accurately.
But, I would like to be able to hear the presentation. I would like to have an idea of what this budget should look like. I don't like that a decision has been made on behalf of the council by four others when we haven't been considered in the conversation. Some of us have had conversations, but others haven't. And I'm not sure what's being included or what's not being included, where the money is being spent, where it's not being spent. We heard just a few minutes ago that now 2.1 million shouldn't go to the schools. Well, has that already been decided because, ha, did a majority decide that? I don't know. I mean, I'm speaking, I'm speaking right now. What I'm saying is, if we're not going to act as a body and have these discussions, which I thought we were supposed to do, to decide on behalf of the citizens, I'm not sure, I mean, I don't, I don't know where we're going here, honestly, because I know that Vice Mayor and I have had discussions about things, other people have had discussions, but if four people are deciding, and those are the votes, and the rest of us don't matter, and 12 million dollars is the number, and things are being added back in anyway, or, I mean, I'm just, I'm just confused with the whole process. I really, I really am, I'm, I'm, I'm not trying to be rude, or disrespectful, or argumentative, I'm not politically posturing. I really am genuinely confused about what the purpose of this is if decisions have already been made, really. I mean, I'm genuinely saying that, so...
Madam Mayor, I know Councilwoman Hugson wishes to speak. My point was, I do not want any public perception to come out of today...
Right.
...that anything do the contrary.
No, I understand what you're saying.
So, I've heard from all seven, unless I've heard otherwise, and I don't think I have, that specifically, those positions are in.
Which ones, though?
And specifically, the commons attorney, sheriff's office, police department... sheriff's office, police department, and so on. I stand by what I said last week, because that's what I've been hearing from council, that all seven of us, all seven of us, have been saying moving forward. And so, forgive me, I, to have any communication today out of this body, this room, that something is not in, I don't, I don't understand, because all seven of us have said, "We want those things." And so, understanding where the manager is wishing to move us forward is, let's have the discussion of what's in, what's out. If someone is saying they want to, don't move forward with those, any of the aspects of the public safety component especially, please bring it forward, because I will say, please, no, as hard as I can. So, forgive me, I don't, Councilmember Hugson wanted to say something, but I also-
Vice Mayor.
And I guess with that, so, you know, just, you mentioned you're not sure what the process is or how this works, but how every budget, every individual family and business makes a budget.
I don't know how a budget is made.
You first look, well, I'm speaking, please. You first look at revenue, okay? We, for some reason, government does things a lot of times backwards. They say, "Where do we want to spend the money?" And then we'll say, "Now, we'll get more revenue." So, the first item was really the impetus for the document, because we, a majority of us said that since the very beginning of the year. "We do not want to increase the tax burden on our citizens." We said that repeatedly, overly, everywhere, paper, articles, meetings. "Don't want to raise the tax burden on our citizens." Campaigned on it for a year. So, we mean that. So, when that came to, the push came to shove, once we got from the city assessor that said, "Oh, the tax equalization rate is 92 cents? Great, we need to be below that, so we don't raise the burden on our citizens." From that, now we recognized, great, the tax rate at 89 cents has a 5.5% increase in the general fund from what Councilmember Mischin's told up last year, the general fund. With that, 5.5% increase is ample opportunity to do what we did last year, which is a very big budget, I may add, and add another 5.5% compounded on top of that. $12.3 million more. What do we do with that $12.3 million more? A majority, I think, actually, Vice Mayor said it correct. I think all seven of us said, especially today, we need to focus on public safety. So, of that $12.3 million, scratch out $3 million that goes to that. How much goes to the new fire department? Scratch that out. How much goes, not scratch it out, is not having it in. So, I don't mean to, don't want to be construed as scratching it out. Subtracting that from the $12 million, that's extra. Now, what do you have left? Then you're prioritizing, you're saying, "We're not just giving it everywhere. We're prioritizing first." If we don't have, with that $12.3 million, that can fill all those public safety components, great. Then what do you have? Then you can do the next steps down the path. And so, I think it was fairly straightforward, and that's what we're deciding on this, but to do it backwards, to say, "Where do you want to spend the money?" And then, like we're talking now, "Oh, it's a cut, it's a cut, it's a cut, it's a 5.5% increase, $12.3 million more than that budget last year." Let's now, as a council, say, "Here's where we want it." Well, how much specifically goes to public safety? And all the pertinent structures of the public safety? Great, how much do we got left, okay? Where are we going to allocate that? Great, then we're done. That's the way a budget, when we're going forward, should be.
Yes.
Agree totally. We're missing one key part in this, in that those, the initiatives that are on the slides are new spending for new additions, right? So, it's pay increases, it is-
So, those were the priorities.
Additional positions, right? So, before we start to talk about new initiatives, new spending, we have to recognize the increase in costs to maintain the status quo level of service, right? So, that's got to be paid out of the increase in revenue. There was a, and there was a document sent out, I think on the 3rd of March, that went through all of those inflationary contractual increase adjustments to the budget that get us back to being able to fund the level of service that's being provided now. That's about $12.1 million of inflationary increases, annualization of costs. So, I think that's the one big piece that we may be missing in the conversation, is just understanding that just to get back to where we were, we need roughly $12 million in new revenue, just to provide that same level of service.
Assuming last year's wasn't a really large increase, and the year before, and that we now are saying, we've got a whole new administration, and it's going to maybe look at something differently. In the 20 years I've been here, I've never seen a zero-based budget. I've never seen anything that said, "What are we really doing starting from scratch?" With new administration, that's normally the very first thing that you do, is saying, "What is critical and what is not?" Rather than just a, rather than a whole new administration and a whole new council and everybody treating it just as a, you know, just a slight adjustment or two here and there. That's the problem.
And, you know, I think, I appreciate what you said, but I think that the real component that's missing here is, we're our citizens, right? They aren't getting a revenue increase in their wages and compensation for inflation, right? So, why should we be taking more from them? So that the government can realize that fact. That's not how this works. And, you know, we really need to go back to thinking about who's really in charge here. It's our citizens. That's who we serve. And there's also other things that we can look at. I know that we're waiting to see those numbers coming back from the departments on their ability to reduce spending. Frankly, I mean, I think that would be the most important thing to see moving forward, is what's that going to look like? There's other strategies that we talked about with managed vacancies. Do we need to continue to manage the number of vacancies we're managing moving forward? I would say, maybe not. There's just a whole, there's a lot more that is going to go into this where we're going to be able to find savings and reduce costs, and we'll get there.
So, bottom line, just, excuse me, I apologize, to level set. So, $12 million in new revenue, 12.3, about 12.1 in inflationary increases. If we use the strategies that Councilman Mischin's mentioned, we save roughly $5 million, plus another, or 4.6, plus another, say, 2.2 in budget cuts, right? That puts you at about 6.7. So, where we land is, if we all accept that premise, all will build a budget from that framework. Where we land is we have just shy of $7 million to purchase new services, and those are the new services that are on those slides. And I think what we've heard, without a doubt, and I'm sorry, I apologize, is, what's in is everything related to public safety, right? Maybe that's your starting point. The, I would tell you that the salary increase for our employees, if we want to maintain and keep high-quality employees providing high-quality services, we have to be competitive. And 5% is competitive, and it's not even where we are, what we're seeing across the region. And that's something that was in the budget. I think there's a desire to fund, to support schools, and that's represented in there. I think what we need to, where we need to get to is, if we fund all of those public safety positions, then that gap we discussed grows, right? So, we, where it's, you know, 6.7-ish right now, we funded all the public safety positions that put us, what, Donna? Somewhere in the 8.5, 8.5 range, roughly? Can you get there? But we can get the exact number.
It's like 1.4 million.
So, 1.6.7 plus 1.4 is 8.1, right?
And you're looking at it backwards. You're looking at the request as the cut. So, look at it forward. I think that's a better way to do it.
Right.
So, anyway, just, sorry, I know we're at 6 o'clock, so it's-
But from that point, if we wanted to fund everything in public safety, plus what we discussed, we've got to find 1.4-ish million dollars in less spending, even from the, if that means reducing the initiatives that are currently in the budget. So, if we fund everything in public safety, find $1.4 million in savings in the initiatives that were up there, we find $2.2 million in cuts, and we use the strategies that we talked about, we've got those budgets.
And so, I think with that, too, that was kind of the inference of saying, "Hey, you know, we're the volunteers. You guys are the experts. We're kind of outlining what the overall mission is. The overall mission and the vision is a less tax burden on our citizens and make sure we're safe." That was kind of the mission, making sure that we improve our education. That's different, that isn't just money. That's, you know, discipline and quality and all that kind of stuff, so.
Dr. Warler.
Yes, thank you. I'm trying to make sure I say this right. We talk about the citizens. I received votes as well. I was not a part of the conversation. So, that means you excluded the citizens of War Two in your conversation. That's not fair. I don't agree with that 2.1 or whatever that number is for the, whatever the less, whatever the number is for the school system. I don't agree with that. So, my thoughts, my value was rejected. It wasn't even considered. And I think all the things that I see now, I'm like, why am I even here? I was excluded from the conversation. So, you've excluded the voters of War Two in the conversation and preparing a document that a state council should prepare, but it was excluded, I was excluded. The area you live in was excluded. I wasn't part, I wasn't a part of the conversation. That's not fair. I'm sorry. That's not fair. I would never exclude anybody from a conversation about a budget we were supposed to be preparing together. So, I don't agree with that amount for the school system. I think that amount should be increased. I want to go on record that. I believe as for six, I think the, plus the city manager has put two, three.
Seven, right.
I think we need to come to between the six and the three. I think we need to come to a number in that area, whether it be four or whatever. I think we need to do some kind of an increase for our school system. Thank you.
I believe they asked for nine.
That's seven.
Eight or nine.
Seven or eight, somewhere around that.
So, we're in the middle.
My, throughout War Two and throughout the city, and I've talked to people about the 89 cent per hundred. They weren't agreeing. So, you wasn't left out.
Yeah. You participated, I did not.
My turn for you.
You know, I understand the heart to Councilmember Warler. I understand, I understand what you're attempting to communicate, but I would challenge you and others to consider how many times maybe Words Three and Four were left out in the last 20 years? How many times, 2, 4, 5, or 2, has been left out in discussions and policies? And even if there's a difference of opinion on them, how many times was left out? Look, I will openly admit that this rollout may not have been the best. It wasn't the best. I've openly set up responsibility for my contribution to that. But patently, I reject the notion that, oh, now I'm left out or something. Look, for the past 20 years, 20 years, how many policies has Councilmember Hugson been left out? And then, all of a sudden, there's just agreement and we're moving forward with the direction, "Sorry, Jeff, Word Three is left out of our conversation." And now, in the last two years, I'm sure I can go back in my notes and find something where I know I was left out. With school board appointments, I wish I could articulate the things that happened behind closed doors in the last two and a half years about what I thought should happen for schools. Was I, was Word Four left out because I wasn't, had the opportunity to go my way on something? I think city staff needs direction on how to move forward. I think we need to have another meeting. I think May 2nd is an option for that. I've referenced that. From my point of view, I've offered on policy what I think needs to move forward. I've offered on direction what needs to move forward, especially as it was going to be presented tonight. I believe we can do the things we want to do that all seven of us have spoken to, and then move forward into the things that maybe all seven of us don't agree with. There is consensus on a plethora of things. And for that reason, we need to charge forward and find what it means to bring the seven of us together on those things, move as a body, and then there is going to be disagreement on some other things. That's what the extra meeting could speak to. And so, yes, I own how I goofed up candidly on some of this. But I also say, let's move forward, let's not look to the past about how I wasn't left out, because that, it can go tit for tat for a great deal either way. So, respectfully, if you haven't heard from me, please ask, and I'll give clarity. I would ask my colleagues, do the same, offer your input so that we can have the next meeting move us forward.
Just one second, one quick second. I have to make a goal record. I have never had a conversation outside of this room about a budget process or got with other council members to make a decision for the whole city of Lynchburg without consulting, without, in the being an open body. To make sure it's on record. I have never done that, nor have too much integrity to do any of that nature without being in this body here. I would never do that. I have to make sure it's going to a school board appointment. I have never done that. I want to make sure we're on the same page about my integrity. Thank you.
Councilwoman Dullin.
You know, I'm not even sure I want to attend another one of these budget meetings, because this was all decided prior to March 21st, and it's going to be rammed down our throats no matter what we do. So, I, and you've already said, you're going to do this, this, and this, and majority rules. Have at it. Come back and talk to me two years later.
Mary Jane. Look, I have said what I disagreed with. I have also offered, there are things the seven of us agree with. To just throw that out there, it's, like, come on.
Hey, you just threw stuff out there that we're accusing people of not listening to you.
Yeah, all the time.
I feel like this is like a high school, in need of some sort.
Look, if you don't want to be here, you can leave, and we'll continue to have to debate.
Thank you very much. I may consider that.
Then you are doing a disservice to the voters who did elect you.
Well, you didn't listen to War One when they got up and spoke two weeks ago, a week ago. And as Councilmember Taylor says, everybody he talked to thought 89 cents was fine. I can tell you, I've talked to hundreds of people that are absolutely scared to death that this is going to gut our city and come three, four years from now, when we sit back and look at what's happened, that's going to probably be the side of the truth.
And if you weren't here to offer that voice, it would be a disservice. Even though we disagree on the matter, you should be here, and just to throw your hands up and say, "Oh, it's just not worth me being here," is wrong, even if we disagree on the policy.
If it were a more of an intellectual conversation, it might be.
Give me a break, Mary Jane. You know, the thing is, that, you know, I know people like to kind of make something out of nothing, but the reality is, ever since the beginning of this year, ever since the new council was elected, they campaigned based on listening to citizens that said taxes are too high, ever since the beginning of the year. So, this is nothing new. What is new is when, on March 14th, when we got a budget, in spite of repeated one-on-ones with the budget, with the budget regarding, especially when we had a budget work session that a majority said, do not raise the taxes. We got a budget that did what? Raised taxes 10 million bucks. With that, it was obviously going the complete wrong direction. After the budget was presented May 14th or March 14th, a majority of council said absolutely not. I've ne, I've been here 20 years, I've never seen that on the council. I mean, normally we say, I like that, I disagree, never a majority. And so with that, the, the thing was to say, reset. Here's what we want, okay? You understand that? Here's what we want. We do not want to be raising taxes. You guys come up with the best budget that actually meets public safety, that actually improves schools, that actually makes sure we have necessary service. Now what we're doing is jockeying for every little thing and making this, the very thing that the, the letter said not to do is make this just political theater, rather than saying, here's what it is, we don't want to raise the burden on our citizens. What can you do? Come up with a professional budget that actually does that. And rather than us pontificating about what cutting or just, you know, things, that's what I would have liked to have seen on May 14th, or March 14th, is a budget that did that. Then we'd have been having a great conversation, we'd all been high-fiving each other, we'd all been agreement 100% because we would have said, yeah, that's what the city manager proposed at the 89 cents, we can live with them. And we've been done. We went ahead and meeting after meeting, month after month like we're going to be. So anyway, I, I appreciate that and I hope that the staff can actually come up with, hearing what you've heard today, again, with the 89 cents, come up with a budget that actually meets and be as efficient and creative as possible. So that's enough.
Greg said a few minutes ago, balanced budget. That's what he said. So I believe him.
Well, but that, did you, did you have more to say?
Yes.
Sorry. But that included things that not everybody agreed on. So that's, depends on what that includes. And so it depends if everybody's voice matters and what you suggested to make that happen.
And, and Madam Mayor, as the former Vice Mayor of Lynchburg pointed to me, out to me plenty of times, that's democracy.
Sure.
That's how it works.
Sure. So, you know, that was one way to do it. You know, I asked for this last meeting and I would still like to see, I know because Mr. Bend, I know you haven't had a chance to finish your thought earlier and, but I know you had a presentation that you didn't get to finish sharing that you worked hard on probably. I, because I do have a voice, would like to see still the full public safety package that you proposed in January, all things included, presented in whatever comes next, on the 25th I guess, I want to see it in, every piece, for me, please. And what that looks like even with 89 cents, because I campaigned on public safety, I had conversations, that was my promise, that was my number one issue, it was not taxes only. I never promised an exact rate, I said lowering taxes and I was going to get there eventually in this budget, but not if it cost, was a cost to the safety of the city and also to the schools. So I don't agree with cutting the 2.1 million either.
It's not a cut.
Or not including the 2.1 million addition, not adding that into it. So I would like to see all the public safety additions that were supposed to be in it, in the 2.1 million also with 89 cents, for me at least, if it doesn't matter to anybody else. Anybody else want to use your voice and see what you'd like to see just because? Dr. Warler?
You know, I just, I mentioned earlier about the school system. I think we need to come to a media, media, medium, middle point in their request and a super tendency, this city manager's request.
Mr. Bend, did you want to complete your thought from earlier?
Okay. I enjoy the exchange that you guys have with one another and the feedback to me. I want you to know that together with staff, we work really hard to do good things, right? So if I've missed something someplace, it isn't for a political gain or any kind of gamemanship, that's on me. That's on me. Because I work with the seven of you and we meet one-on-one and so if I've missed something in those, those meetings, it's on me. So with that, I think the 25th, I think we got some pretty good, Greg did a great summation there. I do think that what we've got to be careful about in this next piece is there may be things, again, this was just to make sure that we understood all of the things that you, each of you find important or somehow reflected. And whether or not there's a majority or not, we've at least discussed how to get there. So some of that is that. So we'll make every effort, so Jeff, I do, Councilman, I do think we need the 25th, just because we're kind of buttoned up against how, when, when we adopt. So I do think we need the 25th, we're going to make.
You mean the 25th?
You're going to be, you're going to be here at the 25th.
Congratulations, let me see the wedding ring. We didn't get to see, we should be talking about happy.
Yes, there we go. Yes, indeed.
Sorry, Caribbean calls.
So that's, you're going the 25th.
Yeah, yeah, sorry, y'all.
He proposed the May 2nd addition.
May 2nd, yeah, let's do the May 2nd.
One of the things you had said is looking ahead to say whether or not a meeting is necessary or not, and I'd say the 25th is necessary for what we need to accomplish. And I do think the 2nd is going to be needed as well, if we're buttoned up against the night. So we'll go back and continue to work as hard as we have. The last little piece here, and I can pass this out, was a conversation about Horizon and the behavioral health component, that there's a request to fund roughly 4 million dollars, that they have a gap to help provide a resource that will help relieve our police department of certain expectations resulted to TCO, TDOs. And so I do, yes.
Nothing, I'm just, we're talking about a gap, let's not add on top of our gap. New initiatives.
I, I understand, but that was Vice Mayor Feraldi who gave us a request and then what I'd say is, bottom line upfront, you'd have to find capacity in your CIP, right? So that would mean other things are delayed. I would offer that you would, if you so choose to do this kind of thing, you position it as a fully funded project as opposed to a partially funded project because I think if she continues to kind of have to chase after 4 million or, or some kind of amount thereafter, it's going to take her longer to get a resource that may provide the certain relief that we need. So I will say, as part of this, good news is that while we might position that number between Donna and some other folks, there's some grants that we might be able to veil ourselves of to kind of knock that number down. So I won't go any further with that. You guys can reflect on this opportunity. I'll pass this around and give one to anybody that's here.
And briefly, if we're looking at capital improvement projects, most of which, almost all of which are needed, without having them in front of me, I don't want to say all of them, I'm sure they all have a purpose that is warranted. However, this is one of the gravest, I think, most important needs in, in our community, I think. In addition to all the other things that are being proposed, I think this has a very important thing, very important metric to hit, and that's the mental health and the impact it has on our law enforcement community. Mr. Patrick actually had a wonderful line, so I won't take credit for it, but the quickest way to get more law enforcement on the streets is to get them out of the hospital. And, and this, I think, would accomplish that. There's an economic element component to it with jobs. So folks, I would ask you to really consider, as we're looking at the CIP specifically.
So this isn't an operating budget, I think.
This would be something, I would ask us to reconsider, some of the things we're doing in the CIP to, to get this moving forward. I don't see any other community in the Commonwealth doing something like this. And this is really, I think, something all of us should be able to get behind. So in my capacity as a board member on, on Horizon as well as on this council, if you have questions, please refer to ask me or, or, or staff or Ms. Lucy. I, I really think we should look at a way to accommodate this in the budget.
And I just have one question on this. How and where does this intersect with, one, what state delegation's got for us with the?
I can speak to that briefly. I, I'll be a little bit vague because I don't know necessarily what I can say in open versus closed, but generally speaking, Senator Newman was a strong advocate along with the rest of delegation, Delegate Walker, Delegate Peak and Senator, Senator Peak, Delegate Walker and Delegate Byron about getting funds to springboard this, but those funds only are but so much. And with the level of dollars it would take to see this project to fruition to the level it needs to be, there, there is a gap of funds that are there. And I think because Lynchburg is going to host it, the site, as well as the overwhelming amount of resources that are sitting at the hospital probably right now, you know, it, it warrants us rising up and following in the suit of our General Assembly delegation who have advocated for it, I think we can take that banner and push it across the finish line.
Motion to adjourn in order? One thing.
We as a council, the whole body, we need to form a mission statement.
A mission statement or a vision statement?
Vision statement, I'm sorry. We need to do this. We don't have one and it's inclusive. So we need, we need to sit down and work it out. Okay? Set out right, Dr. Warler?
What are you talking to me? I'm sorry. Mission statement? Well, we have mission statements, we have goals and ideas that we had planned, but I'm always open for dialogue, anytime, yes.
Yes. Well, and I agree, and I put, I've sent out an email that I'm going to start working with, with Winter and Matt about kind of moving forward and how to do that so we can all come together about that. Pardon?
It needs to be a council.
It is, let's, yeah, a council, a council vision statement?
Yes.
Yeah. I agree. Okay. The meeting is adjourned. Our next meeting will be held next week, April 25th, 2023, at 4:00 PM in the second floor training room. Thank you.